Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg Tuesday, October the 8th, 2019. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6 o'clock PM. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allitt.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present.
Ms. Daniels. Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Madsen.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Sorry, here.
Ms. Williams.
Here, thank you. And Ms. Daniels is excused for this evening's session. Moving on to identification, Mr. Allitt.
Sure. We could all just take a minute and pause and keep in our thoughts, prayers, and anything we could go to, just the people in our community in need, people who are dealing without, people who perhaps need a roof over their heads or shelter of some sorts. We could just keep all of those individuals in our thoughts and prayers and pause for a moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allitt. Moving on to Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Madsen.
All rise. For the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Moving on to Communications, we have a full schedule tonight. We'll start with introductions from Mayor Papafous regarding new employees in the Department of Community and Economic Development. Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. If you all would like to come forward. Just wanted to take a brief moment to introduce to you, council members and the public, our new economic development team for the city of Harrisburg. We are thrilled to have been brought on two individuals who, I think, complement each other extremely well and bring a lot to offer the city of Harrisburg, Ms. Ahmed Johnson and Mr. Jamal Jones. And if it's all right with you, why don't you just give them a brief moment to be able to introduce themselves to you and the public? And then they're looking forward to a working relationship moving forward.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Okay, good evening.
Hi, good evening, good evening, everyone. It's great to be here, thank you, Mayor. I'm Ahmed Johnson. I own the Ahmed Joe brand, and we're down in Strawberry Square. Passionate about entrepreneurship, had my business here for five years. I've also worked in the community for a little over 10 years, working with small businesses, doing diversity and inclusion, served on some of Dolphin County's efforts with helping with diverse and inclusive efforts in the city. And I'm really excited to hear from all of you, to learn from all of you, and to hopefully serve as a bridge to people understanding all the wonderful things the city has to offer. I never like to say that Harrisburg is a best-kept secret. I don't think it's a secret. I think it's a great place to be, and I'm just excited to work with everyone to help make it even better.
Thank you. We look forward to interacting with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, council. My name is Jamal Jones. I'm the Director of Business Development and the LURDA Administrator. Proud to say that I'm born and raised here in Harrisburg. I graduated Harrisburg High School. Also have a bachelor's degree from Georgetown University in Washington, DC. I've spent over 15 years working in the city with, doing a lot of work with young people through counseling, through coaching sports. The last eight years I've worked in the PA Career Link System, working with young adults and adults to help them through workforce development to acquire skills and training, you know, to be able to move into employment. So I'm really happy to be part of this team here with the city, have an opportunity, really, I think, to reinvest in this city through, you know, several different means, especially through different ways to economically, you know, develop the city and try to encourage, you know, new business.
Thank you. Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
Certainly, council looks forward to interacting with you and working with you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman, do you want to say anything?
Welcome.
Welcome, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Moving on to report from the Harrisburg Housing Authority. Okay, anytime you're ready, Mr. Madsen.
Thank you, Madam President. My name is Singor Mans. I'm the Chief Executive Officer and President of the Harrisburg Housing Authority, and it is our pleasure to provide the final report of our Summer Growth Program. As most of the councilmen and women know, this program has been now sort of a staple of this city and of the Harrisburg Housing Authority. This actually would conclude our sixth year of the program, in which, as most of you know, it started with 25 kids, and now it serves 100 teens through the ages of 13 and 16. Six-week program during the summer, and it provides a whole host of different activities that the kids, the teens, go through. We call them the Environmental Teen Corps, ETC for short. With us is the Program Director, Clarence Watson, immediately to my right. We have some of the teens that are a part of the program. We actually have a mentor as well here. Two mentors. Another, yeah, another mentor behind me here. And then we have our esteemed colleagues from the Environmental Advisory Council, Ms. Rafika Mohammed, who was here, and then, I thought I saw Chris Nave. I don't know if anybody else is here from the council. But as you know, this program, at least $127,000 of this program, comes from the host fee, which the Environmental Advisory Council, the EAC, actually provides that host fee to the Harrisburg Housing Authority. It supports just over 50% of the entire cost of the program during the six-week period. The total cost is about $600, or $240,000. The Harrisburg Housing Authority actually covers the balance of that. So, without further ado, because I know you're not here to listen to me, I'm going to let Clarence and Mr. Watson talk a little bit about the program and what we were able to accomplish this summer. And of course, it's always nice to hear a little bit from the folks that benefit the greatest, aside from the residents of Harrisburg, but our teens.
All right, good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm sorry. So you're just going to go ahead.
All right, first of all, I'd like to thank Rafika and EAC for, and the City of Harrisburg and the Housing Authority, for giving me the opportunity to be part of this program every single day for the past six years. And starting with 25 kids was an incredible thing. I look at it like the Six Rules of Business, and the one rule says risk. You know, most businesses don't succeed within the first one to five years, but after six years, I said, this program is incredible. And I was listening to a speaker, and the reason why I think that the program is very successful is because we don't, we teach our kids to chase excellence, not money. Money will find excellence. You know, if you're great at what you do and you're good at what you do, money will find you. So throughout the six years, we've been practicing excellence with our children, teaching them personal development, you know, inviting speakers right from Harrisburg High to come talk to them, getting them to understand the power of the city, of taking care of the city. And I came across this the other day, this is, we, the teens write a report after every, you know, after every year. These are three years of reports from all the kids. I read every one. And as I read through them, not one referred to money. Everything referred to building relationships, building networks, you know, understanding. A lot of our kids don't even know, never been uptown, a lot of our kids never even been on the hill. Now our kids know every street in Harrisburg. They dialogue, they network, they connect. And I think that is the most important part of this program. And I've never been part of anything like this. And I think that the investment in our youth, the personal development, giving back to our kids, employing probably the most teenagers in Pennsylvania, and the effect that it's having on them, I think it's incredible. And again, I just want to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity, giving my mentors, we have 14 mentors, we have some here right now, who are part of the program to go ahead and take our kids to the next level. And I'm going to have two of our, two of our kids, one her first year, and his, your third year, second or third year, going to give you an example of how the program has affected them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Watson. Is the light on?
Yeah. My name is Nigeria Glenn. This past summer was my third year in the program, and I think the program really gave me a sense of how important community service is, because a lot of people don't really understand how much that can really impact the city. It can really take a city to the next level. Like, a lot of kids around don't really want to pick up trash, and some may do it for the money, but I feel as though there's a large group of the program that really does it to help improve Harrisburg and become leaders in the, in the community and really do what's best for the city.
Hi, my name is Amari Melendez, and this past year was my first year doing the program. This program really showed me, like, a different view of the city, and you could, like, see the change in, like, what, when we started and, like, after, and like, just how we just, it helps. And it doesn't just benefit, like, the community, it benefits us too. Like, we learned how to be leaders, like, and you just, it just helps us a lot. Like, it helped me because I, this benefited me because I got a job out of it, like, I learned how to do, like, stuff that I didn't even know that I was capable of doing, meeting people that I didn't even know that I could be, like, friends with. Like, you create bonds, and it's just, yeah, it helps.
Now, she had an incredible story, real quick. You know, we do our learning lunches, and we give back to the city restaurants, and one of the restaurants is Joe Mama's way up on Dairy Street. And before our kids go there, we would send two kids to go help prep the food, to see what it takes to prep the food. They'll get there nine in the morning, see what it takes to get ready for lunch crowd. So she went to Joe Mama's the one time, and she was so incredible that they said, hey, we want to give you a job. So they gave her a job, you know? So just being in the right place at the right time, working hard, not even understanding she was a true leader, really gave her access to that, to that environment.
If you don't mind, I think we're going to ask the mentors to take this mic up here, since they're behind us, but I will, since we're sharing stories. There's a young lady that is no longer in the program. She actually aged out, so to speak. And she sends me her grades every single marking period to show me that she's getting all As. She also is so committed to excel, she tells us, through her mother, that she now wants to go to college. She wants to become a lawyer. She wants to go to law school. I didn't encourage that because I'm a lawyer, she just wants to become a lawyer. She is so committed to doing well because of this program that she actually also wants to become a mentor. I mean, if that's not a testament to the power of the program, I'm not really sure what is. So with that, I'm going to ask this young man to come up. Coach, if you can provide a couple of comments.
Good evening. How's everyone this evening?
Good, thank you.
Good, good. Yeah, Mr. Watson invited me to come down, so I cut practice a little short, but I definitely wanted to come down and just talk about the program. Myself, it's a summer job. I work at River Rock Academy, which is an alternative school. So Mr. Watson reached out, and I'm like, man, I need my summers off. He's like, I'm telling you, you're going to like this program. And he hasn't lied to me. I want, I'm going a couple days a week now, I'm there every day, and it's a good transition for me, because of the kids I'm used to dealing with. Typically, I got to keep my eyes on them at all times. A lot of times at the program, kids are eating in the learning lunches by themselves. I know these two were mentors. When the mentor was out, they were walking the streets picking up trash by themselves. So it's good to see the kids do things without that micromanagement. And the other thing that stands out to me, with me being a football coach at Harrisburg, a couple of our kids were in the program, and just to see their growth in the program and carry that on to the football team. So it's a lot of little battles getting won each day, and the kids are definitely benefiting from the program, as well as the staff and the mentors. I learn something new from the kids every day. So I appreciate Mr. Watson, Mr. Mans, for giving me the opportunity.
You're welcome, thank you.
Hi, I'm Ayana Hurst. I've been with the program since it started with the first 25 kids, and I became a mentor once I graduated high school. The program has taught me a lot. It also creates bigger branches for the kids. Like, a lot of the kids don't know that when you drop trash on the ground, that it covers the sewers and then it causes floods. We learn all those things in the program, and I think it's very beneficial that this program keeps going, because it helped me a lot in high school, because I did start when I was going into ninth grade, and it helped me, you know, figure out things in school, put things first. I know the Seven Habits book really helped the kids a lot. They, Mr. Watson makes them do assignments almost every day, so like, they literally are doing school during the program too, and I know a lot of them like it. I know the learning lunches helped them, I know it helped me, and I know it helped the city too, so.
Thank you.
So I'll conclude, and obviously, we can, we'll answer any questions that the council has, but this program had a 98% success rate. That is to say that out of the 100 kids that entered the program, 98 finished the program over a six-week period. We do have a relatively strict policy as it relates to doing what you're required to do, and if you don't, then at some point or another, you're probably going to get removed from the program. That's for everybody's safety and concern. So we were successful. Last year was a 99% success rate. So we have, our kids are great. They're outstanding. The other thing that I wanted to point out was this year, actually, and I hate to say this, but you'll read in the very first, I don't hate to say this, but I hate to admit this, but in the very first paragraph, I suggest that there's room to grow, right? And I say that because the program is ever-evolving. It didn't start as a perfect program. It is not a perfect program. It continues to evolve, it continues to improve, and we continue to look for ways in which to make it better. One of the things this year that made the program the best, because, and I know this because everybody has told me, all the kids, is because of the involvement of the Environmental Advisory Council, EAC. They inserted their ideas, their concepts, their suggestions into the process, and it made the program unquestionably better. And so we continue to invite that involvement, that cooperation, that collaboration. I had to point that out because it was essential to the success of the program this year. With that said, we had some other benefactors, so to speak. They were Nestle, they were Aetna, they were UPMC, Hamilton Health, we had, I believe, CRW, and we had, I don't want to leave them out, Senior Life and Capital Blue Cross and Blue Shield and BBNT. They provided some financial resources for us, and I say that because I'm encouraging next year for corporate America to start putting into the investment in our kids in the city of Harrisburg. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson, and thank you, Mr. Mans. And I'm certainly elated to hear all the wonderful things. I started from the beginning with you, and I've been to each of your affairs. As a matter of fact, Mr. Watson, I encouraged him to have the affair, the graduation affair at the Hilton, as you know. I've seen the growth, I've seen the discipline that, in the kids, and so I seen them when they first started, and now where they're at at this point, and I'm just really very excited about continuing the program from the city of Harrisburg. And I'm sure the mayor agrees, and we certainly want to be a participant as long as we can.
Thank you.
Mr. Majors, does anyone like to say anything? Oh, wait, one question, I'm sorry, one, one question. It was mentioned that some of the children that were in the program were not living in the low-income housing unit. Could you give me some information on that?
So that assertion is correct but mistaken.
Well, I just want you to clarify that.
Yeah, so, right, so the way that we set up the concentric circle, so to speak, is that we look first to the public housing teens, right? And where we don't have enough applicants, then we look to, of course, the city of Harrisburg teens, and that's never an issue at that point, right? We had 225 applicant, plus over 225 applications for 100 slots. What we do, however, do, and this is where I think there is, there are some mistaken notions, is that the Harrisburg Housing Authority, through its own funds, allows for its staffers that have kids through the, from the ages of 13 to 16, to participate in the program. Two years ago, my daughter participated in the program. She's now a junior, and she's talking about going on to college, and she has internships at a hospital. This really, he gave one of the recommendation letters because of her work. I bring that up because if you look at the role, the role of teens, it'll suggest that there are some kids that aren't in the city of Harrisburg. Well, that's because some of the kids are from our staff. In addition, because we made a commitment early on, as most of you know, that if you are in the program, so say, for example, a child lived at Hall Manor, and they were in the program, but then their parents moved to Steel, but they had still been in the program. We don't kick them out of the program because they've left the area, as long as they're still committed to doing the things that they're supposed to do, and they actually resided initially in the city of Harrisburg. And so there are, unless I'm mistaken, there are not any kids that are on the program that are outside of the city of Harrisburg that did not, that were not HHA employee, staffer kids, or they weren't initially in the program to begin with. I'm not, if that was your question, that's what I was.
Well, yes, because I had a work session. It was mentioned that some of the kids did not live in the low-income housing unit, and it specifies in that, in our program, that kids had to come from those particular areas.
Yes.
So I want to make sure that they clarify that. Another thing is, and I'm glad you're working closely with the EAC. In previous years, there's been problems when working with the EAC. But my understanding is now that, you know, you've been able to work together and unify and bring about a better understanding of what green programming, green initiative programs are, and how you work with them with the healthy lifestyle. So congratulations also to the EAC, Mr. Mans, and congratulations again, Mr. Watson and Mr. Mans.
One comment on that, and again, again, I want to thank Rafika, because when we got together, it's funny because I take the notes, everything in my notes that we went over when we met with the EAC, we covered during the summer. I mean, from the food bank to everything, and it, again, it's really expanded the environmental stewardship of our, of our kids, and, I mean, that's only the beginning, and I love it.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, if you don't mind, I really have to say this. I know it's off-book here, but the Harrisburg Housing Authority, along with many other stakeholders in the city, held a weekender event, is what we called it, and it was fantastic.
Yes.
It was overwhelmingly a good time for the city of Harrisburg. And I want to mention, because I saw these individuals, so there may have been others, including yourself, but I just want to give a quick thank you and shout out for the support of Ms. Daniel Bowers. She went to every single event. I was there every day, even the Network Summit, which was about educating the public regarding entrepreneurship. She attended all of them. I believe I saw you as well, Councilman Majors, at Hall Manor, right? I'm sure there were others there, but I remember seeing those two specifically, and I wanted to thank both of you for supporting us. I see, oh, I saw you.
Actually, you were at the Hilton.
Yeah, Hilton, at the Hilton, and, you know, last year it rained out every day. I got soaking wet all three days.
I've thanked you so many times, President Williams, my tongue is dry. Thank you for everything.
I'm the one pushing for the, the most.
You are absolutely correct.
I'm the one who wants to make sure that our kids excel, and I'm just
There's no question.
Really, really happy that, you know, that at the sixth year, we have finally reached a plateau of almost 100%.
Thank you.
But, yeah, we seen you there, I only seen you there on Sunday.
I was there.
Well, thank you. Just kidding, just kidding. Mr. Majors, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, well, first, I want to thank Harrisburg Housing Authority, but the biggest thank you was to the participants in the program. Taking time out of your summer to clean up the city of Harrisburg and be active in learning throughout the summer is key to your development as a person and also just as a member of this Harrisburg community. So thank you to all those participants, and I believe all of them are, get a lot out of the program. One of the questions I had was already asked about trying to get some clarification on the Harrisburg students or residents that are actually in the program, but I will ask offline to get a breakdown of their percentage, because it sounds like we prioritize the Harrisburg first, but just want to learn more about the program that Harrisburg Housing Authority has for some of its staff. So we can talk about that just offline. For, for, for kids, okay. All right. And to the students, so, and the participants in the program. From your perspective, they mentioned that there's always room for growth, so what do you see as something that could be done to make the, to enhance the program?
I believe something that could be done to enhance the program would be, to be honest, I think the program's great. I mean, there is room for improvement, I don't really know, but I would say, I don't know, we do a lot, like, we learn, we have speakers coming in, teaching us about different things, like, Mr. B. Maids, Brian Majors, he comes in and talks to us about different things. Like, we learn things that London learned. I mean, I remember me personally, I was at the Food Bank, Paxton Greens and stuff, learning about all different things, like, I don't know.
Okay, all right, okay, same.
He wants to say he wants more money. That's what he wants to say.
Mr. Mans, I was going to say that. You mean, you're a young man, you're not saying money?
Well, no, and, yeah, so that's great. Trying to think. So, yeah, and I appreciate the mention of the involvement of the Environmental Advisory Council. I think that's a great partnership. But additionally, during one of our meetings, I think the EAC came before us, and there are some folks from the EAC that are a part of Harrisburg University, and I don't know if there's a partnership there already, but I think creating a better partnership and even a pipeline, I think a lot of the stuff that you're doing in terms of improving the environment in the city of Harrisburg is great, but also, we could connect that to potential either college opportunities or job programs that could be made available to city residents. Something that doesn't get enough attention in my eyes is the partnership that Harrisburg has with HU to have Harrisburg graduates go to Harrisburg University at a reduced and almost, you know, on a scholarship that they comply for annually. So kids that are learning about environmental improvement in the city of Harrisburg could have an opportunity to get a degree in environmental science from Harrisburg University by staying in the city for free, I mean, not having to worry about room and board. I mean, I'm still paying back student loans because of, a lot of it due to room and board, so another opportunity to partner. So if we can build those, build those connections and grow that, so kids, you know, of course, people want to try to get away from home, but there's a great opportunity here in Harrisburg to take those skills that you're learning and apply them forward. So with that, thank you all for being out here. I, when I listed the partners, and I looked down briefly, I knew I was going to miss one. Harrisburg University. I absolutely agree, yeah.
Mr. Allitt.
Just want to echo, it, I'm thrilled with how the program has grown over the years. I remember when we really started, and we're thinking, we can do this, and the fact that it's grown and the weight it has is great, so I hope we can continue to do that. And I know it's kind of exciting throughout the summer months, when I see the teens in the bright-colored t-shirts all throughout the city, cleaning up trash. It's heartwarming, so thank you, guys, for what you do.
Thank you.
Ms. Bowers.
Thank you, thank you. It was a pleasure of working with your colleagues and staff over the course of the weekender. It was a lot of fun, and I look forward to next year's. I had two thoughts, as my colleagues were asking their questions, and thank you, guys, for being here this evening. I wanted to know if you provide any mechanisms for the students to track their environmental stewardship outside of the summer, like, through the rest of the year? Any incentives that way?
Yeah, so, that's a great question. We don't have the apparatus set up to do that just yet.
Okay.
So as you've heard, some of our mentors So, as you've heard, some of our mentors, and, and even our, our program director, their, their summers are off, but their, their full-time jobs begin in the fall, right? Some are in school, right? Some, some of the mentors are college, college brown. So we don't necessarily have that apparatus. The closest thing right now to what we do that's more of a full-time, all-year-round kind of engagement is our OnTrack program. And we gave a little bit of information on that, but on the environmental side, and OnTrack is more geared towards going into college or to a trade school, et cetera. But, but, but tracking the environmental impact and how our teens sort of look at environment outside of the ETC program is a, would be a wonderful study for us. And we're, we're actually getting to the point, I think, where we could actually start going back to some of our graduates and really just talking to them and surveying their, their mentality now.
I think that would be a great start at least.
Yeah, it's a great question.
My second question was about, excuse me, the OnTrack program. Do you have any data on how many students have pursued post-secondary education, or...
Uh, no, I don't. That is, again, that is, like you said, the apparatus that we're going to use to track it. Right now, the, the kids can do it year-round. First, for the first couple of years when we were at HAC, we were able to get the kids to finish in the summertime, the program, but it's actually a, a year-round pro, not year-round, from September, basically, into the end of the school year. So I'm going to be contacting all the kids, because I have all the email addresses and all the passwords, and track the kids as they go through the school year, because they get gifts and all this kind of stuff. So that is going to be, uh, and also my seniors, because the kids who age out, what I do is send them the information still, hey, go ahead and complete your OnTrack as a senior, so you can go ahead and be available for these scholarships. So we're just starting that process.
Okay. Well, thank you, thank you again for your presentation.
Ms. Green.
Thank you, President Williams. First, thank you all for coming today. Thank you for the hard work that you do. I know a lot of kids that have went through the program. I look forward to seeing the programs continue to grow, especially with the partnerships with Harrisburg University. I know this summer I reached out, it was kind of during the summer, though, to offer some opportunities for kids to go through some STEM camps and things, but the timelines just didn't line up, so we weren't able to do it. So I look forward to making some of those partnerships and connecting you with some resources for some of the students to help them explore STEM programs, STEM camps, career exploration. We've got all sorts of cohorts from welding to automotive technicians available right here in our city, and I'd like to make sure our students and our youth really get connected to it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Mr. Watson.
Thank you so much for your service and all you do for Harrisburg's youth. Just want to echo what my colleagues had to say. I just had a few questions. Well, one I wanted to say is that the Youth Commission is looking for applicants, and I'll be announcing that later in the public app, comment period. So if you have any youth that would be interested, we'd love to send you the information so that they could apply and be part of the Youth Commission. The other piece is, you know, I have deep passion for the Harrisburg Promise Initiative, which is a PAX program to help kids get into entry-level or college courses. Do you connect, do you let the youth know that participate in this program about that opportunity and some of the others? For example, like Patricia Robinson has her U, Certified Apprenticeship, or not exactly an apprenticeship program, but her Trades Program as well.
Yeah, we, we try to do some outreach as it relates to the Harrisburg Promise Program. As you know, the Harrisburg Housing Authority is one of the founding members of that program with HAC. And so, so we're very much vested in the success of that program. We, we were not just part of the creation, but we, we actually helped develop the concept, the details. And so, the, the, I, I don't want to, there have been some challenges, and I, I don't want to necessarily articulate what those challenges have been, but it's been a little bit of a struggle. We now think that potentially, one of the partners, as an example, Camp Curtain allowed us to use their facility. Camp Curtain Academy allowed us to use their facility, fabulous facility, was a great venue for our kids. We think that we now have an avenue to really get to the kids a little bit better, so that we can get more involvement. It's been a little bit of a struggle, but we think that we now may have some, some individuals that are much more receptive to this kind of program, very much in line with what you were saying about Harrisburg University. There are opportunities there, and we need to make sure that we make that connection, bridge that connection between the kids' lack of information, if you will, to getting them to the point where they actually want to seek post-secondary education and getting the information they need, so that they don't have overwhelming debt once they make that decision and leave the school.
Yeah, just want to make sure youth have an opportunity for all the opportunities that are out throughout the city, so look forward to working with you on that dialogue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for being here, and thank you for all you do for our youth, and congratulations to the young people.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I'll come back and ask for 50 more thousand dollars. No, I'm kidding. Moving on to report from Kittleson and Associates Incorporated on the I-83 Capital Beltway PennDOT project. Is there someone from...
I'm going to give the report tonight, and Wayne is going to join me.
Okay.
We, uh, we wanted to give what we'll call an interim report to council, because Councilwoman Green had requested a report, I think, at the last legislative session, and we wanted to honor that request. So where we are right now is that Kittleson is in the process of finalizing their I-83 freeway analysis. They're using this tool called FreeVal, which is a sort of proprietary tool for predicting traffic flow and traffic patterns, and they are expecting to have their report completed by October 21st. And they are happy to return after that time to council and present a finalized PowerPoint. But we thought, since they've shared their preliminary results, we could begin the conversation here tonight with you. In addition to working on the, the finalized plan for the freeway analysis for I-83, they're also still working on what they're calling a multimodal planning study for the whole, whole area around I-83. They're looking at amenities that, and that the city and public might like to see for some of the streets in that corridor. They're expecting their multimodal study, which is sort of Phase 2 of their project, and has more community input and involvement to be completed by mid-December. So that's the status report of where the contract is, should have the, the final I-83 analysis done by October 21st, and then they'll continue in, through the end of the year, working on the multimodal study. So there was a meeting on September 16th that took place at PennDOT District 8 offices. That included Kittleson, it included the, the city, Wayne and myself, it discussed, it included many PennDOT officials, and there was a sort of robust discussion of Kittleson's preliminary findings. The main points of the findings were, and I think there was a complete agreement on the, on the first point, was that what is needed is no more than six lanes on the I-83 Main Line, three in each direction, to be able to adequately plan for what PennDOT is calling their sort of 20/50 traffic projections. Even using PennDOT's own data, three lanes is sufficient in each direction for, for traffic flow. And actually, if you add a fourth lane, it really doesn't do anything to, to relieve any more congestion than with three lanes in each direction. So there was a sort of unanimous agreement on that point. Then there was a, a good discussion about both the southbound and in the northbound direction, about how traffic gets onto the Main Line. And that's where, that's where Kittleson had some interesting, interesting thoughts. So we'll start with southbound. So going southbound, their analysis was that the three lines of the Main Line would be sufficient to relieve congestion, and that there was not a need for an additional, what they call a collector-distributor system, which is a series of lanes that would additionally bring more traffic onto I-83 in the southbound. That is a significant finding, because potentially, that could save millions of dollars in project costs if that wasn't built. It would also dramatically reduce the footprint of what we're talking about. So in the southbound, they felt that three, three lines in the Main Line would be sufficient. In the northbound section of I-83, they were concerned about what they considered to be the weaving traffic turbulence that is basically caused when traffic is trying to get on and off of 83, especially in the northern direction. With the new exit plan for Cameron Street, and with there being a relatively short geography of the southern section from, from the Susquehanna River to Cameron Street, they were concerned that, that collector-distributor system may, may not be the best option. And they suggested at least PennDOT look into the concept of what they were calling a braided ramp system, which is basically a way of, through elevating the lanes, creating a, a sort of braided on-off system, which is different than just a, a flat collector-distributor system. That could also affect the footprint. I think PennDOT's initial reaction to that was that that might be too expensive, and there may not be enough of a footprint to do it, but that was, that was a different analysis for the northbound lane than Kittleson had for the, the southbound lane. In addition to those findings, PennDOT wanted to make clear that they've done some reconsideration of things on their own end, and they are basically, for the I-83 northbound ramp to 19th Street, they are shifting the, what they had planned for the collector-distributor system, they're shifting it to reduce the right-of-way impact, especially at 19th Street. That's important, because that's, that's about where our Public Works facility is. They're also planning a, a Paxton Street Road Diet, which would be implemented between 13th and 20th Street, which would also reduce the widening and the right-of-way impacts at the 17th and 19th Street intersections. And they're looking to re, actually realign, basically completely redo Paxton Street in that area to, again, minimize, minimize the footprint. So PennDOT is committed to doing what it can to minimize the footprint. They're still evaluating the preliminary findings of Kittleson, and Kittleson also wanted to make it clear that these are preliminary, and they haven't issued the final report, and they'll come back with the final report. But it seems encouraging at this point. There's been good dialogue, good discussion, and we're hopeful that this will be able to impact the final designs for the project in a way that saves taxpayers' money and minimizes the impact on our residents.
Any questions, councilmembers? I'll start with Ms. Bowers, any questions?
No, thank you.
Ms. Green.
I don't have any questions. Thank you for providing an update. Can we get an update, I'd say like the first week of November, they should be finished with their...
We could schedule that if you'd like, and Kittleson is willing to come and present you a mini PowerPoint presentation with some more data and details. So just let us know the date that works, and Wayne can schedule with Kittleson.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Watson.
Uh, no questions for me, thanks. Looking forward to that final report.
Mr. Allen.
Just, you may have addressed this partially. When the final report is done, what is the intention then that they will, that Kittleson will have? Is it presented to PennDOT? Like, what is, what are the actions? Obviously, we have the information, but where does the information go from there?
You want to address that? I mean, ultimately, the information for the Phase 1 of the Kittleson report will be a traffic analysis. We can't dictate, obviously, what PennDOT does with that data, but, I mean, you know, the, the tool that they're using, the FreeVal tool, is currently being developed by, or has been developed by Kittleson, and, and one of the users of that tool is, is the DOT. Kittleson has even offered to review, so they did a microsimulation using a Vissim model for their, right, you have a highway capacity manual that has all these equations, and how much capacity can, can an interstate take? And incidentally, Kittleson also drafted that document. So they, they have a, PennDOT use a, or PennDOT's consultants, I should say, used a Vissim, a microsimulation analysis, to, to make sure that they were designed in a proper roadway analysis, you know, a proper roadway. Kittleson has used a new tool that they developed that PennDOT has already accepted and is using in, in, in other areas. And so now you have a macrosimulation and a microsimulation. So Kittles, Kittleson has offered to review their microsimulation to try and mesh the two together, because it appears that the two are producing different results, big-dollar results. Yeah, so I can't speak for PennDOT, I hope, and they, like Mayor said, we, it was a very open discussion, and we hope that they, you know, seriously consider the results if indeed they continue to show what that initial report is showing. But, you know, they are looking at the overall footprint and, and in other areas as well, so.
Okay.
Their report will just be, you know, for our use, and hopefully, hopefully for PennDOT's use as well.
Okay. Mr. Majors.
No, no questions at this time, but look forward to the, the final report.
Great, great.
Thank you.
And I don't have any questions. I had the opportunity just to sit down and meet some of the Department of Transportation officials at the conference, and I had an opportunity to just talk to about quite a few of them for 45 minutes, so I am looking forward to the report that you have coming forth. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Will now move on to courtesy of the floor. Anyone who would like to come to the mic, please do so now. I'll start at my right. Give your name and address, please.
Hi, guys. Good evening, City Council. My name is Lisa Hughes. Address 2818 Greenwood Street. I'm here this evening regarding the murder of my brother, Calvin Hughes, who was found deceased on February the 9th, 2019. His case was quickly closed and ruled as a suicide, despite other evidence that we had come across. The case has been reopened by District Attorney Shardo. However, it's been no movement in the case whatsoever. I'm also here requesting an independent investigation into the Dolphin County Coroner, as well as the Harrisburg Police Department, for conspiring to cover up the murder of my brother Calvin Hughes. I do have a report that I created for you guys.
Okay.
To address my reasons why, as well as the evidence that I have proved, um, excuse me, I'm sorry, as well as the evidence that I submitted to District Attorney Shardo. I have all that included, as well as a DVD with the evidence that I have regarding the conspiring of covering up my brother's murder.
Okay. You have any information with you today?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Okay. This is my city clerk. Could you make sure that he gets a copy of that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Are you, were you done then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to my right that would like to come to the mic this time, please?
Hello.
Good evening.
Thank you. My name is Danny, I live on Fourth Street.
I'm sorry, I, you're too close to the mic.
Sorry.
Could you say your name and address again, please?
Yes.
You don't have to hold it, it's okay.
My name is Danny, I live on Fourth Street. And I'd first like to offer my condolences to the family over here, and I, I hope the truth is found. And then I'd like to also proceed, the understanding, I believe, was that the four companies being interviewed, considering the purch, possible purchase of Capital Region Water, that those interviews would be completed today. I'd like to ask what the progress of those is, and when the public will hear about it, as well as to what ability City Council is able to participate in those interviews, and whether they've been able to review the letters of intent and those other documents that were submitted initially. And then I have another brief question after that.
Mayor, would you like to answer that, please?
Yeah, I can give a brief update. So just, once again, so that everyone's clear, we are not in the process of selling the water system. We haven't made a decision to do that. What we are doing is we're trying to collect information about the system as part of what is currently an open comment period that CRW has on its, both its proposed stormwater fee and stormwater plan. We have concerns about the impact of that fee on the rate pairs of Harrisburg, what it might mean long-term for, for our residents in terms of affordability, and so we're looking at potential options that could help...
We have concerns about the impact of that fee on the ratepayers of Harrisburg, what it might mean long-term for our residents in terms of affordability, and so we're looking at potential options that could help them. And thus far, we've had three of the four interviews, the fourth interview had to be rescheduled, but is still going to be scheduled before the end of that comment period. I believe the comment period closes, I want to say, October twenty-third, does council, can council, twenty-second, okay, twenty-second. So that is coming soon, and City Council is also planning a hearing presentation on that stormwater fee. So I would encourage everyone to come out to that and to look into that. There are a lot of things that have come up over the course of the discussions, which I think are worth having a conversation about, has to do with how we can have rate stabilization and protect ratepayers long-term. There are lots of different ways to do it. I won't go into great detail right now, but the meetings that have taken place so far have not included City Council, they have included the administration, and they've mainly been used for fact-gathering purposes so that we can make informed comments about the proposals that are currently before the public.
Okay, thank you. And just as a record of note, Capital Region Water will be here in City Council chambers October the fifteenth, and they will be here to do a presentation. At that time, is there any additional questions you may want to ask or anything that you have concerns about with Capital Region Water? They will be here in council chambers, okay?
Great.
At five-thirty.
Great.
Thank you.
And then I had one real quick other thing, both through private communication and also in these chambers, I feel like we've had some understanding of how most of the members of City Council got feeling about privatization, but I'd like to say, I don't believe we've heard much from Councilors Green or Bowers about how they feel about privatization, and I'd like to ask their position.
Well, not at this point, but if you would like after the meeting, they can talk to you personally, one-on-one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else to my right?
Hello, my name is John Wanner. Thank you for having me here today. I'm here in support of keeping the water supply public. I think the water supply in Harrisburg is probably our most precious resource, and I think we all do know that. With such an important topic, I believe we definitely need to have a discussion, a very open, public discussion on it, and I think we can certainly use your guys' help with that. Right now, we all know how badly we do need improvements in that water supply system, and I think as citizens, we do need to start taking responsibility and find ways to make that work, and I think supporting Capital Region Water can be a great path for that by keeping it public.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else to my right? Anyone in the middle? Hello, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
My name is Kay Avril Hutchinson, and my address is six-two-six-five Withers Court. I'm sixteen and a junior at Central Dolphin High School. My opposition to water privatization is for a reason. Private companies' only goal would be to profit for their shareholders. This would exclude the community from having any word on our own water. This will also lead to the poorest citizens of Harrisburg potentially not being able to afford water due to its costing an estimated fifty-nine percent more than a public service. The public wants to control their own water, and the public should be able to afford it. I am addressing this due to the fact that me and other youth are being forced to. I'd like to thank you for your time for letting me step up here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your comments.
Can I just, if, just briefly, just from a standpoint of dialogue, I am, I'd be very happy to meet and talk with you all after this meeting, a little bit about it. I will say that the only reason to go down the route, and we haven't made any decision to go down that route, would be if it were to provide a benefit for ratepayers, and there are ways in which a scenario of privatization could do that. One of the ways is that currently, all the infrastructure repairs that are required for our water system fall entirely on the ratepayers of Harrisburg. That is a very high burden, could be almost a billion-dollar burden, that falls on a very impoverished, relatively small community. Through privatization, what you can, what you could do theoretically is spread that burden out over a much larger ratepayer base, over, instead of a small number of ratepayers, a much wider ratepayer group. Also, there are ways to have, to not sell the asset, not transfer the asset, but preserve the asset, but maybe look at a different type of operation and management arrangement in which the city would maintain the asset, but another company could bring to the table certain savings in terms of purchasing and contracting, certain savings in terms of financing and other options. So it's not a simple issue, although at the root of it is, water is a precious natural resource and it's something that we all need to cherish. But we have an environmental problem here in Harrisburg that we have to solve, and it's going to cost a lot of money, and we need to have a, we need to have an open conversation where we're discussing ideas and concepts in a way that lead to solutions which are going to work for our ratepayers, and that's all we're trying to do is facilitate a conversation. So if you stay afterwards, I'm happy to talk with you and anyone else more about it. Okay?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else in the middle who would like to come to the mic?
Hi, my name is Kyle Miller. My address is thirty-nine hundred Greenwood Boulevard. I am eighteen years old. I am a senior at Susquehanna Township High School.
And Kyle, let me say this to you, I will let you speak, but generally, the meetings are for the residents of the city of Harrisburg. I'm very interested.
My address is in Harrisburg.
And you're concerned about Capital Region Water, so I'll let you go ahead and speak.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm here to speak on behalf of both my Susquehanna peers and my Harrisburg peers when I say this issue is very important to us in that we greatly oppose the privatization of our water systems and sewer systems. Not only would this create, we speak about fees now, what it's going to cost our public, what's going to cost our taxpayers, what's going to cost our residents, but we don't talk about what it's going to cost people my age, people that come after me, in terms of cleaning up the mess that privatization can lead to, in terms of environmental impact. Again, if we're just looking at the Susquehanna River, it is, as I'm sure all of you can admit, incredibly polluted. Allowing this water to be opened up to private corporations and companies would just make it so much harder to monitor what we are putting into our water, and that can also become, again, another huge public safety concern, because not only are we pulling fish with, you know, actual cancerous tumors out of this river, which is an incredibly rare occurrence, but we're also putting this risk, when we have more floods in the future, when we have, you know, our downtown area filled with water, we're not sure what's in those waters at this point, because if we're opening it up to these companies that are allowing, that we are going to have a very hard time monitoring what they're putting into our water, it's just going to create a greater risk, not only for us environmentally, but for our health.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Anyone else in the middle?
Hi, my name's Kate, I live at eighteen-fourteen North Third Street. Thank you so much for caring about our water and wanting to protect it in the future. Privatizing the water is not the way to do that. There is no instance in the world where selling the water supply helps the people who are nourished by that water supply. It's not a thing that happens. One of the companies that has bid on Harrisburg's water is the company that bought the water in Flint, Michigan. Just putting that out there.
Thank you.
And just for point of clarification, there has been no bid, there's been no RFP, none of that is happening. The only thing that's happened is that there have been a series of conversations so that we can better understand the issues that surround the necessary upgrades to the water system.
Thank you. Anyone else in the middle?
Hello, my name is Matthew Kossick. I live at nineteen-twenty-one Green Street. I'm just here to say that water is an essential building block of human life, therefore I believe it should be under the direct democratic control of the very people that it feeds and nourishes. I do not think it should be under the control of an external private entity that will sacrifice our public safety to their bottom line and are beholden to their shareholders only. Therefore, I'm asking you to protect us, the residents, and not mortgage our tomorrow for a short-term victory for the mayor today. We privatized our parking, and now we pay Manhattan-level prices for an hour downtown. Scranton, Pennsylvania, a similarly-sized city, privatized their water system, and now they pay some of the highest water bills in the country. So even though this is only preliminary and they're doing research, we want to firmly let City Council know we are not interested in privatizing our water.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Christina Costalecki at sixteen-twenty-two Susquehanna Street. Thank you all for listening to us, of course. It's great that we have so much support from everyone coming out tonight to talk about water, because I think it's really important, and all of us do too, that we have this conversation early on and that we not wait until it's too late to have these conversations, which is one of the reasons that we're all here tonight, even before, you know, any bids go out or anything like that. So a couple of the points that came up tonight that I wanted to speak to, exactly like what was just mentioned, we did privatize parking to, for short-term effect, and now it's going to be almost impossible to pull that backwards. We know it's a really long-term commitment, and we, you know, I've been to many City Council meetings where the parking authority has come up and it's sort of a pain in the side, and water is even more important than parking, right? The other thing is that the higher rates, while we can have short-term rates at the beginning, it's sort of like the, those great offers from the cable company, right? There's all these great short-term incentives at the beginning, but in the long-term, just like what was said earlier, the private sector does hike up the prices for the average citizen. And we've got to think in the long-term for our city, those short-term objectives are not the things that are going to solve our problems. So I highly encourage us and City Council to not privatize, and we do have problems that we need to consider, and we've got solutions that we've got to work on, but CRW can be part of those solutions. And yes, we can find examples from other cities who have done it well, and we don't see examples of other cities who have privatized, who have had those long-term benefits. So I encourage City Council to keep an eye on the long-term positive benefits for our citizens. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the middle?
I just wanted to say, I'm a professor at HU, I just moved here. I'm Melanie Stegman, I'm at sixteen-twenty-five Green Street. I'm your future, your tax base is going to increase, we're hiring as many people as we can. We've got, each one of our faculty members have ten projects ready for students to start yesterday. It's going to get better, and I want to buy a house here, and I know lots of people, you know, forty-nine-year-olds with careers under their belt who want to come and build houses here. I'm starting, I'm moving my company from Seattle to here to make video games, so, you know, it's getting better, and I want to be a part of a community that's looking forward with a positive idea that, you know, twenty-five years from now, we're going to have, you know, we're going to have fixed our water infrastructure and, you know, made our highways the way we want them, and I just want to encourage you to think positively because it's getting better, and I'm really proud to be here.
Thank you. Anyone else in the middle?
Hello, my name is Vishal. I live at thirteen-nineteen Green Street. A few moments ago, the mayor said that he's, the function of the search for, or the request for the letters of intent were to start a conversation, to get, to talk about ideas. The difficulty I have with that is it's difficult for us as citizens to talk about the ideas when all of it has been kept very secret from us. I know City Council had asked for some of the interviews to be done publicly or asked to sit in on interviews. I know that that request was not honored. I'm not a hundred percent sure if City Council even has the letters of intent, of interest that the mayor has received. I do have five of the six of them due to a right-to-no request. I've brought them with me in USBs today. If any of you would like to see them, I'm more than happy to share, because I do think that the water should be public. I do want to have that discussion, and I'm more than happy to convince the mayor and anyone else who needs it that the water should be public. But in order for us to have that discussion, the interviews, this whole process, it needs more transparency. And currently, there's a lot of distrust in the community because of the lack of that transparency. I would like to urge City Council to be more vigilant. I would like to urge them to be stronger in demanding transparency from the mayor, and I would urge the mayor, if conversation is what you want, then please talk to us and tell us what it is we're supposed to be discussing. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else in the middle? To my left, anyone to my left? Okay, thank you. Before we move on, I just want to mention that City Council had an executive session that was held on Wednesday, October the second, and that was to discuss legal issues. Moving on to approval of minutes, approval of the legislative session minutes of September the seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. Is there any admissions, deletions, or corrections? Councilmembers? Hearing none, minutes will stand approved. Moving on to reports of committees. I will do my report first because I know there's some individuals here who's waiting on the announcement whether or not their reappointments or appointments are going to be voted on. So report from Chair Williams on the work sessions of September the second and October the first. I'm sorry, September the twenty-fourth. The Administration Committee discussed Resolution sixty-seven of two thousand and nineteen at the City Council work session on September the twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen, and that resolution was a resolution ratifying an agreement between the Pennsylvania Historical Museum and the City of Harrisburg, providing for the transfer of the Harrisburg City Archives to the care, custody, and control of the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission. The PA Historical Museum Commission, an agency under the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, has ratified an agreement to receive and become the legal custodium of all of the City of Harrisburg's public records at the designated new location at six and Hamilton Streets. The Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission will provide, manage, and protect the city's archive documents with a high level of security. Withdrawal of any records from the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission by the city will not be allowed unless authorized by the mayor of the city and the executive director of the Pennsylvania Historical Museum Commission. Both must provide written consent. With regard to the right-to-no law, the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission shall notify the city using the legal contact. Termination of this agreement by the city or the Pennsylvania Historical Museum Commission will be each given a ninety-day calendar written notice to the other party. Moving on to the work session of October the first, two thousand and nineteen, the Administration Committee discussed five resolutions at the City Council work session on October the first, two thousand and nineteen. Resolution fifty-six of two thousand and nineteen was a resolution appointing Mr. Brian J. Estella to serve on the City of Harrisburg Audit Committee. Brian Estella has served on the City of Harrisburg Audit Committee since September of two thousand and twelve, and presently holds a position as chairman. Mr. Estella has extensive experience and knowledge in the areas of management and financial practices. Mr. Estella has worked collectively with the Administration and Council to recommend positive changes to our financial process and would be an asset to the city with his skills in the RFP and RFI areas. I, as the president of Harrisburg City Council and chair of the Administration Committee, recommend reappointment to the Audit Committee. Moving on to Resolution fifty-eight. Resolution fifty-eight was a resolution confirming the appointment of Nava V. Wright to serve as member of the Board of Directors of the Susquehanna Area Regional Airport Authority. Ms. Nava Wright presently is employed as the Health Compliance Officer with the City of Harrisburg. She possesses a high level of expertise... She possesses a high level of expertise in economic development, housing, and health on a professional level for more than 20 years. Shares thorough knowledge and understanding of federal, state, and local grant funding, which would be beneficial to the City of Harrisburg as a board director on the Susquehanna Area Regional Airport Authority. I recommend Ms. Wright to fill the five-year vacancy or the unexpired term of Susqueha- area, area, I'm sorry, Regional Airport Authority. Moving on to Resolution 62, and that resolution is a resolution reappointing Mr. Alex Reber to serve on the City of Harrisburg Audit Committee. Mr. Alec Reber has served on the Audit Committee for the City of Harrisburg for over a year. Presently, he works for an accounting firm in the position as a senior accountant. As required by the municipal law, one member of the Audit Committee shall be a certified public accountant, and Mr. Reber has that certification. Mr. Reber has extensive experience in accounting in his present position as well, serving as treasurer in six nonprofit boards and committees. Mr. Reber stated a few recommendations at the interview, one being a more diverse Audit Committee, the other rotating auditors utilized by the City of Harrisburg who could bring about a different perspective. I recommend Mr. Reber for reappointment to the Audit Committee. Moving on to Resolution 65. It's a resolution recommending the reappointment of Mr. Wayne S. Martin to serve on the Tri-County Regional Planning Commission for a two-year term. Mr. Martin is also presently employee of the City of Harrisburg in the position as the engineer for the past five years. Mr. Martin oversees the planning, the development, engineering, construction, and management of capital projects for the City of Harrisburg. He has exceptional knowledge in engineering and also possesses a degree as an attorney. As required by the Tri-County Regional Planning Commission, four members represent the City of Harrisburg, but Mr. Martin is the at-large member representing the entirety of Dauphin County. I recommend Mr. Martin for reappointment to the Tri-County Regional Planning Commission, who has worked tirelessly to, hmm, too many, too many resolutions, who has worked tirelessly to correct deficiencies in our roads, curbing, traffic signals, and other areas in the city which are in need of upgrades. Moving on to Resolution 69 of 2019. A resolution appointing Ms. Tamiya Green to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council, which is the EAC. Ms. Tamiya Green has expressed a sincere passion to help in any capacity the residents of this city. She presently works with the youth at the Boys and Girls Club in Harrisburg to educate and teach them the importance of healthy lifestyles, character building, eating healthy, and the environmental issues facing the city. Ms. Green, other goals is to maintain positive relationships with schools, communities, and healthcare facilities with the youth. Her experience in organizational and program management bring needed skills to the Environmental Advisory Council. I recommend Ms. Tamiya Green to serve on the EAC Council. I ask my colleagues to please vote in the affirmative on the six resolutions, and that's the end of my report. I will move on to report from Chair Allitt on the work session of October the 1st. Mr. Allitt, are you ready with your report?
I am, thank you.
You're welcome.
At the work session held on October 1st, we had the mid-year budget review included in the packet, and per the administration's own comments on it, there was really a no-news mid-year update. But as a quick update, with halfway through the year, the city's revenues are projecting just over budget and are over in the amounts coming in for LST, earned income tax, and the mercantile business amounts. Moving over to expenditures, the administration has not spent, year-to-date, the amounts pertaining to the personnel line items, overall operating expenses, and have had some cost savings there, particularly in the amount of 1.2 million in personnel savings. And that's primarily due to vacancies that have not yet been hired. So the news coming from the major budget report is really that there is no news, nothing that is a cause of concern, no expenses that are out of hand, and no revenues that are performing under year-to-date at this point. So that will conclude my report.
Thank you, Mr. Allitt.
Thank you.
Moving on to report from Chair Mattson on the work session of September the 24th.
Thank you, President Williams. Council had two work sessions, September 24th and October 1st. The Community and Economic Development Committee had two items to discuss. Resolution 55, which was a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to enter in an easement agreement with Green Works Development LLC for the purpose of installing three bollards in the public right-of-way in front of Midtown II educational building along the north side of Riley Street between Susquehanna and Third Streets and the City of Harrisburg. Planning Director Knight went over the resolution and took questions from council members. The applicant also answered a few questions as well. The project has met all the requirements for passage, and I would encourage all my colleagues to vote in affirmation of Resolution 55. Discussing Resolution 64. Council was given an overview, oh, excuse me. Resolution 64 was a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application to PA Walk Works to fund design work for the City of Harrisburg's Urban Meadow Extension Project. We were given an overview of the project of the Urban Meadow Extension and went over the grant process. I believe the Urban Meadow will be a fine addition to that section of the city and would encourage all my colleagues to vote in affirmation of that. That's it from my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. Moving on to report from Chair Bowers on the work sessions of September the 24th and also October the 1st. Ms. Bowers?
Thank you, President Williams.
My apologies, I missed you. I skipped over you.
Oh, that's okay.
That's okay.
Thank you. The Building and Housing Committee met during the work sessions held on September 24th, 2019, and October 1st, 2019. On September 24th, 2019, the Building and Housing Committee discussed Resolution 59 of 2019, a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a master license agreement with Cell Co. Partnership or Verizon Wireless for use of certain property, city property, for the installation of wireless communications equipment. Our city engineer, Mr. Wayne Martin, provided an overview of the equipment that would be installed following the meeting. He shared the locations of where, exactly where the equipment will be installed throughout the city. On October 1st, 2019, the Building and Housing Committee discussed Resolution 60 and 61 of 2019. Resolution 60 is a resolution approving the disposal or donation of certain property owned by the City of Harrisburg. Mr. Jeffrey Knight, Director of Planning, shared the property that will be disposed or donated includes older model cameras and camera accessories that are currently housed in the Planning Bureau. Resolution 61 is a resolution ratifying an agreement between the City of Harrisburg and Link Computer Corporation for the purpose of providing software to support the city's agreement with the Borough of Steelton. The agreement is for one year, and the new software will not interfere with software or with the city's mainframe that's used to generate the residence of the City of Harrisburg's utility billing. I would ask my colleagues to support all three of these resolutions.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Moving on to report from Chair Majors on the work sessions of September the 24th and also October the 1st. Mr. Majors?
Thank you, President Williams. The Public Works Committee held work sessions on September 21st and October 1st to consider the following bills and resolutions. The September 24th meeting, we considered Bill 8 of 2019, an ordinance amending Chapter 6-311.2 entitled Contaminating Water Supply Maintaining Well of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Harrisburg to allow city-owned non-potable water supply wells to be used for city comfort facilities within city parks. We received an overview from Dave Baker from Parks Maintenance. This bill would allow the City of Harrisburg to drill wells to access the, excuse me, access the currently unused bathroom facilities at Italian Lake. We had a positive discussion and discussed the potential of connecting to the lines that are currently there. Mr. Baker explained that the Capitol Region Water Control Lines in that area are damaged beyond the point of repair, and it would be cost prohibitive to try to reconnect those lines. So we are changing the city ordinance to allow specifically for public parks and public facilities, the ability for them to drill wells so that they can be used for our bathroom facilities. So, and I would encourage council members to support this bill. Additionally, there were three resolutions at that hearing. There was Resolution 57 of 2019, a resolution approving the disposition of surplus equipment by the Bureau of Vehicle Management. There are 16 vehicles and pieces of equipment that are currently no longer in use, and the cost to repair exceeds, the cost of repair is far beyond the actual cost of the equipment. So we have been requested to auction off those items, and those items will be available on GOV deals should this resolution be adopted. Additionally, there was Resolution 63 of 2019, excuse me, a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application and execution of a grant agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for the purpose of replacing two diesel-powered bulk collection trucks. Dave West from our Department of Public Works gave us an update, and these are two trucks that are going to be used for picking up refuse within the City of Harrisburg to the tune of 352. Next is Resolution 68 of 2019. A resolution ratifying a contribution agreement number 08A804 between the City of Harrisburg and the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation in the amount of $50,000 for Hur Street sidewalk reconstruction and ADA compliance as part of the PennDOT-Hur Street Improvement Project. Wayne Martin from the City Engineers' Office gave us an update, and this is a part of the current work that's being done across the City of Harrisburg to improve our ADA accessibility, and this is on Hur Street. Next, there was our meeting on October 1st, which include Bill 7 of 2019, an ordinance to technically amend and update the codified ordinance of the City of Harrisburg to conform with the 2018 Legislative Act adopted by City Council regarding Part III of Title IX of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Harrisburg entitled Municipal Waste, Recycling, and Composting Code to provide for the severability and repeal of all prior inconsistent ordinance and to supplement the appendix of the codified ordinance of the City of Harrisburg with rental collection and disposal rate schedules for large sanitation containers used for construction and demolition waste, resolution waste, and the farm show. Dave West from the Public Works provided us with an update to this, and they are looking to get into the business of being able to provide large containers to folks that are going to be doing any construction and demolition in the City of Harrisburg, as well as residents that are looking to dispose of a large amount of refuse. This ordinance, excuse me, the container, we're working on improving the, updating the rate schedule so that it can comply with the city ordinance. So the rate schedule as currently being proposed would be for a 20-yard container was $500 for construction and demolition. For construction and demolition, there's a 30-yard container, which is $550, and for a 40-yard container for construction and demolition would be $600. Additionally, there are residential rates that containers start for residents 20 yards would be $210, 30-yard container would be $220, and a 40-yard container would be $230, plus a $195 per ton fee for any refuse that is disposed of in this manner. We are asking that this currently be removed from the agenda. There are some technical amendments that need to be done between the Law Bureau, Public Works, and City Council, so that we can ensure that when the ordinance is ready, that it complies with all of the city codes. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. Moving on to ordinance for first reading, Bill 9 of 2019. Mr. Petrowski, please read that into record.
Bill 9 of 2019 was moved by Mr. Majors, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's an ordinance forgiving and discharging city rural state taxes included interest, penalties, and costs, and striking off tax liens for certain same-cool impacted properties in the area of the 1400 block of South 14th Street.
That would be placed in Public Works Committee. Moving on to Bill 10.
Bill 10 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Green, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's an ordinance amending the codified ordinance of the City of Harrisburg by creating Chapter 3-147 authorizing and providing for a business parking permit program, authorizing the establishment of business parking districts, authorizing the establishment of related eligibility conditions and procedures, providing for certain powers and duties in the administration of said program, authorizing the mayor to designate an administrator thereof, authorizing the adoption of regulations and fees of said program, and providing penalties for violation of Chapter 3-147 of related regulations.
That would be placed in our Public Safety Committee. Moving on to ordinance for amendment, Bill 7 of 2019. We will be removing that. So we'll move on to Bill 8 of 2019, ordinance for final passage.
Bill 8 of 2019 was moved by Mr. Majors, seconded by Ms. Green. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 6-311.2 entitled Contaminating Water Supply Maintaining Well of Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg to allow city-owned non-potable water supply wells to be used for city comfort facilities within city parks.
Council members, any questions or comments on Bill 8?
Just one question for the administration now, and if Dave could come up. Just to clarify, when we had our discussion, just the cost of the, trying to reinstall the connection between the current pipes and the Italian Lake facility and the cost of drilling the wells, I just couldn't remember those off the top of my head.
The estimate was $200,000 to repair the water line and only about $15,000 to do the well.
Yeah, on the, on the high side, 12, 15 for the well.
Right.
So a significant difference, or we wouldn't be proposing.
Right. No, I just wanted it on the record again, so I just, that was just something that, okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, council members? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Bill 8 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution 54, 2019.
Resolution 54, 2019, was moved by Mr. Mattson, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution confirming the reappointment of Ms. Franchon D. Dixon to serve as Director of Building and Housing, DBHD, for the City of Harrisburg.
Any questions or comments, council members?
Yes, I have a comment.
Ms. Bowers?
Just wanted to commend the city again for receiving funding from HUD during a press conference earlier this morning, so just wanted to note that. And then, secondly, I've requested twice now in the past, we've been able to see the billable hours from consultants, and we have two that were operating within the Department of Building and Housing, have not received that information, so as a result, I will be voting no on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allitt?
No.
Ms. Bowers?
No.
Ms. Green?
No.
Mr. Mattson?
No.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 54 fails.
Moving on to Resolution 55.
Resolution 55, 2019, was moved by Mr. Mattson, seconded by Ms. Bowers. It's a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to enter into an easement agreement with Green Works Development LLC for the purpose of installing three bollards in public right-of-way in front of Midtown II educational building along north side of Riley Street between Susquehanna and Third Street in the City of Harrisburg.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 55 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 56.
Resolution 56 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Green, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution reappointing Mr. Brian J. Astella to serve on the City's, City of Harrisburg Audit Committee.
Questions or comments on Resolution 56? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 56 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 57.
Resolution 57 of 2019 was moved by Mr. Majors, seconded by Ms. Green. It's a resolution approving the disposition of surplus equipment by the Bureau of Vehicle Management.
Any questions, comments on Resolution 57, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution 57 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 58.
Resolution 58 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Green, second by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution confirming the appointment of Neville V. Wright to serve as a member of the Board of Directors of the Susquehanna Area Regional Airport Authority.
Any additional questions on Resolution 58, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 58 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 59.
Resolution 59 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Bowers, second by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a master license agreement with Salco Partnership, our business as Verizon Wireless for use of certain city property for the installation of wireless communications equipment.
Any questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 59 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 60.
Resolution 60 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Bowers, second by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution approving the disposal or donation of certain property owned by the city of Harrisburg, which has exhausted its useful life for city operations, or is nominal value, no value, or less value than disposal cost.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 60 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 61.
Resolution 61 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Bowers, second by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution ratifying an agreement between the city of Harrisburg and Link Computer Corporation for a purpose of providing software to support the city's agreement with Verona Steel.
Any questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 61 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 62.
Resolution 62 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Green, second by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution reappointing Mr. Alex Rebiter to serve on the City of Harrisburg Audit Committee.
Any additional questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 62 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 63.
Resolution 63 of 2019 was moved by Mr. Majors, second by Ms. Green. It's a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application, execution of a grant agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for the purpose of replacing two diesel-powered bulk trucks.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 63 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 64.
Resolution 64, 2019 was moved by Mr. Mattson, second by Ms. Bowers. It's a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application to PA Walferds to fund design work for the city of Harrisburg's Urban Meadow Extension Project.
Any additional questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 64 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 65.
Resolution 65 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Green, second by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution recommending the reappointment of Mr. Wayness Martin to serve on Tri-County Regional Planning Commission for a two-year term.
Any additional questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 65 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 66.
Resolution 66 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Daniels, second by Ms. Green. It's a resolution authorizing the city to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Melissa Snyder for the purpose of serving as the event coordinator for the Art Fest of Greater Harrisburg for 2020.
Any additional questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 66 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 67.
Resolution 67 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Green, second by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution ratifying an agreement between the Pennsylvania Historical Museum PHM C in the city of Harrisburg City, providing for the transfer of the Harrisburg City Archives to the care, custody, and control of the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission.
Any additional questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 67 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 68.
Resolution 68, 2019 was moved by Mr. Majors, second by Ms. Green. It's a resolution ratifying a contribution agreement number 08A804 between the city of Harrisburg and the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, the amount of $50,000 for Hur Street sidewalk reconstruction and ADA compliance as part of the PennDOT Hur Street Improvement Project.
Additional questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 68 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 69.
Resolution 69 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Green, second by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution appointing Ms. Tamea Q. Green to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council.
Any additional questions or comments? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 69 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 70.
Resolution 70 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Allen. It's a resolution confirming the appointment of Mr. Mark Woolley to serve on the Lerd Appeals Board.
That would be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution 71.
Resolution 71 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Allen. It's a resolution confirming the appointment of Mr. Brian Enderline to serve as a member of the Board of Directors of the Susquehanna Area Regional Airport Authority.
That would be placed in Administration Committee as well. Moving on to Resolution 72.
Resolution 72 of 2019 was moved by Mr. Allen, second by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution approving the fourth proposed 2019 budget reallocation.
That would be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to Resolution 73.
Resolution 73 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Green, second by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution approving the transfer of Riverside Firehouse located at 3201 North Fourth Street to the Harrisburg Redevelopment Authority for sale or other disposition.
That would be placed in Public Safety Committee. Moving on to Resolution 74.
Resolution 74 of 2019 was moved by Mr. Allen, second by Ms. William. It's a resolution, the council of the city of Harrisburg recognizing October 2019 as Lesbian, Gay, Mosexual, Transgender, and Queer History Month, and encouraging all people of the city of Harrisburg to work to advance the cause of equality and to recognize contributions of Harrisburg's Lesbian, Gay, Mosexual, Transgender, and Queer residents to city and its community.
Council members, any questions or comments on Resolution 74?
Just one, please. As for this resolution, and I didn't realize how timely this resolution would be in recognizing October as LGBTQ History Month. But today, the Supreme Court has taken up arguments to rule affirmatively one way or the other whether or not someone who identifies as LGBTQ can be fired from their job, which to me in 2019 seems crazy to think that that could ever even be under consideration at this point. So, just a kind of timely introduction of this resolution in light of what's happening kind of in the world today, but I encourage my colleagues just to support this resolution. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Allen. Any additional comments? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 74 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to O Business, council members, any O Business at this time? Moving on to New Business, any new business at this time? I'll first start with Ms. Green.
Yes, I'd like to take the time to let everyone know that the city council and the administration will be holding a pre-trick retreat night bash on October 30th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at two of our local firehouses, one being Fire Station Number One at 1820 North Sixth Street, and one being Fire Station Number Eight at 9 South 13th Street. We encourage everyone to bring the children out, come participate, we'll be there handing out candy and have refreshments.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
And bless you. To whoever sneezes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mattson?
Yes, Councilwoman Daniels could not attend tonight, so she wanted me to just give an announcement regarding the Harrisburg Youth Commission. We are accepting applications for the 2020 school year. If you are interested in joining the youth commission or know someone that may be interested, the deadline to submit an application will be December 13th, 2019 at 5:00 p.m. We're looking forward to the applications, and you can reach out to our clerk's office at 717-255-3060, or you can email us at CLHouston@HarrisburgPA.gov. Also, you can check the city's website as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. Mr. Majors?
Yes, thank you, President Williams. For the public and all residents in the city of Harrisburg, we received a letter from Dolphin County on October 2nd notifying of the changes to polling locations within the city of Harrisburg. So, on October 2nd, the Dolphin County Board of Elections approved several polling place changes in the city of Harrisburg, Swatara Township and Lunndary Township that will take effect for the upcoming November 5th municipal election. These changes are being made due to a settlement agreement between the U.S. Department of Justice and Dolphin County because of the former polling places weren't ADA compliant. So, the first list I'm going to read is polling places that are changing, they're in the same location, but they will be in different rooms in the same location. So, no notifications actually being sent out via mail, but there will be directions at those polling locations. So, that is the Harrisburg 6th, which is the Susquehanna Art Museum. The polling place will be moved from the lobby to the education center and continue to be entered through the main doors of the art museum. The next is 93, which is Edison Village. The polling place will move from the large community room, which is accessed from Chestnut Street, to the smaller meeting room accessed by the South 18th Street side of the building. Let's see, I make sure those are all for the city of Harrisburg. Okay. Those are for... Those are locations that same building, just different room. The next changes are the First Precinct, First Ward, formerly the Comfort Inn and Passage to India at 525 South Front Street. The new location will be UPMC Pinnacle at the Life Team Facility located at 1,000 Paxton Street on the Cameron Street entrance. The former Fourth Precinct, we have, which was formerly Saint Michael Evangelical Lutheran Church at 118 State Street. The new location will be right here at the city government center, the Martin Luther King City Government Building, 10 North Second Street in the lobby. Next is 72, which was the Capitol Presbyterian Church at 1401 Cumberland Street. The new location will be the Downey Elementary School Cafeteria located at 1313 Monroe Street. Next is Harrisburg 94, which is formerly the Bellevue Park Community Center located at Briar Cliff and Oakwood Roads. The new location will be John Harris High School Fieldhouse, door number 10, and that is 2451 Market Street, and the access will be on the South 25th Street side. Then we have 10-1, which was Our Lady of the Blessed Sacrament located at 2121 North Third Street. The new location will be Goodwin Memorial Baptist Church, the Family Life Center, the Social Hall, the rear entrance, which is 2430 North Third Street. Just a few more. We have 10-3, which is formerly the Hady Mosque located at 245... Excuse me, 245 Division Street. The new location will be the Scottish Rite Cathedral, west side of the ballroom, which is located at 2701 North Third Street. And the last location in the city of Harrisburg that's changing is Harrisburg 10-4, which is formerly the Teamsters Local 776, which is located at 2552 Jefferson Street. The new location will be the Scottish Rite Cathedral, the east side of the ballroom, located at 2701 North Third Street. And those are all of the changes residents in that last group will receive, should have received, if they have not received already, a mailer to notify them of those new polling locations in the city of Harrisburg.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Majors. I have quite a couple of new, new business here. I'm happy to announce something new and exciting. We have decided to initiate for our city council meetings. We have so many great people within the city of Harrisburg, so Harrisburg City Council is looking for local unsung heroes. Our city is filled with people who work behind the scenes to make a difference. We would like to recognize these special citizens. Do you know someone who takes the time to help neighbors? Coaches? Organizers? Volunteers at our local hospitals? How about our schools and our churches? Well, we are looking for these special people who go above and beyond without the thought of reward or recognition. Now, the qualifications are that the person is a non-paid volunteer, and also that he or she performs the efforts within the city of Harrisburg. Applications will be available on our website and must be completed no later than Friday, November the 15th.